Ross?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Hart?
Present.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Insalaco?
Here.
Aquorum is present.
Thank you, everyone. It would stand for the prayer by John Barber and the pledge of allegiance.
Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we once again thank you for this fine city that you've given to us, Lord, to live in. Thank you for the council members that you've given to legislate over us, Lord. We pray that you would give them wisdom this evening to make decisions, and, Lord, as always, just bless the people of this city, we pray. And we ask you to watch over the public safety people, the electric department, the fire department, the police department, Lord, as they service each day. We thank you. In this, in Jesus' name, all God's people said.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second.
Motion second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris? Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
I don't see any communication. Is that correct?
We have one communication.
Please. File communication number one.
Second.
Second.
Motion second on that.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
With pleasure of the council, I've got a special presentation tonight. So I'm gonna ask my daughter-in-law, G, if you would come forward, and I'll come down if you don't mind, please.
Hello, council. How are y'all doing?
Hello.
So with the presentation tonight, I have G's mother and father here from Brazil. I'm gonna let her do some communicating for me, if you don't mind. But with this, I'm gonna read a proclamation that I say greetings to. Help me. Okay, and one more. Help. That we're gonna make you honorary citizens of the city of North Little Rock by proclamation myself and Ms. Whitby, city clerk.
Yes. So I've been living in the U.S. for about 10 years now. Got here through a volleyball scholarship. Had the pleasure of coaching Vincent Insalaco's daughter. And now, this is my first, is the first time that my parents had the chance to visit North Little Rock. And they're having a great time. And we're happy to be here tonight. Thank you for having us.
She speaks Portuguese like she lived there. Nothing like a proud father. I love it. I love it.
Where are we?
Unfinished business.
All right. Let me get the unfinished business, please. And I, that's the first one that's come up. I, I'm gonna have to ask the council, we need to go from unfinished business, R25-145. Ms. Amy, am I correct to go to O25-75 first?
Right, to call that out of order so that we get that official before we reappoint Ms. Shields to...
If y'all allow me to go ahead and call that one, O25-75, if you'll read it for me, please.
May it spend the readings?
Huh? Okay, motion, Miss, go ahead.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be read first.
It's got to be read first, yes.
Confirming the reappointment of Kendra Shields.
O25-75, we're reading it out of order.
Oh, okay. I apologize. O25-75. An ordinance authorizing the city of North Little Rock to conduct business with First Security Bank, declaring an emergency, first reading.
May it spend the readings?
Second. Motion to suspend a second.
On the motion to suspend the readings, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second. Thank you. Motion adopt and second.
Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
Thank y'all very much. It had to be done that way, Ms. Amy told me. So if you don't mind, go back unfinished business, and that'd be R25-145, and let's please call it.
Confirming the reappointment of Kendra Shields to the North Little Rock Residential Housing Facilities Board.
Move for adoption.
Second. Motion adopt, second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank y'all. Appreciate it. Go ahead.
Okay. O25-54, council members Robinson and Hart?
Call it.
An ordinance establishing the city of North Little Rock Municipal Property Owners Multipurpose Improvement District, number 41, River Rock Estates Project, declaring an emergency.
We have an amendment. It's highlighted and read, the changes that were done.
Have y'all got the amendment in front of you, everybody?
Everybody's got the amendment in front of you. It changes the language in, in section one, paragraph four, adds section one, paragraph five, renumbers the paragraph six. I'm not gonna read all of it because the city clerk will have the advantage of seeing all of the amendments and can make that a part of it, and deleting the last sentence in section one, eliminating section two, and then doing some renumbering and adding a sentence to section four. And I think that that is council member's, council member Robinson's amendment.
By the way, I have Ms. Farrell and Josh Ferguson. Do y'all wanna go ahead and read this? Let me bring them up. Do y'all still wanna talk, Lisa?
Just a quick thank.
All right. Please identify yourself, both of you, please.
So I just wanna say...
Lisa?
Oh.
No, right here. And tell me who you are. I gotta have it. Tell me who you are.
Is it already on? Oh, thank you. Yes, this is Lisa Farrell. I'm an attorney here in Little Rock, uh, North Rock. My word. I just wanna say thank you to council members. To me, a success is allowing my client to continue to develop and bring more quality housing to North Little Rock. And another success is continuing to have North Little Rock be the best city to develop in, in central Arkansas. And a final success is the beginning of a productive working relationship with North Little Rock wastewater. So, thank you. We're available for questions, but I've got nothing else unless anyone has a question for me.
Any questions? None? I'll see. Thank y'all very much. Appreciate it. We'll go forward. Thank y'all. Thanks, Josh. Do we need a motion as amended or not?
It's our, the readings were already suspended at the last meeting, so we ju, we need a motion to, um...
I'll second.
Okay.
Nicole's second.
There's a motion, men, and a second now.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
The motion to adopt, I apologize.
To adopt as amended.
Move to adopt as amended. Second. There's a motion to adopt as amended. There's a second, but Ms. Robinson.
Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
So far, I cannot say enough about Ms. Farrell, Josh, Michael Clayton, Paula there. They all got together. They've worked this out. So my applause, I applaud both of y'all and all of y'all. So thank you very much. Start selling lots, right, Josh? Thank y'all. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. Tea, Michael. Good job. Consent agenda? Would anybody like to pull one? If not, ask for a voice vote. Mr. Hamilton? Pull them all? Three of them, one step at a time, then. R25-154, please call it. You want us to pull them all?
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sell certain real property located at 512 Main Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to the North Little Rock Advertising and Promotion Commission?
Move for adoption.
Second. Motion adopt and second.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Wait, 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 wait.
Mr. Hamilton? Ms. Fields, please.
Well, on the legal process, the legal requirement is that the majority of the city council present and voting, vote in favor of the sale and allow the city to proceed with the sale. One of the primary legal considerations for the sale of any property is that there be adequate consideration. Has to be adequate payment. We cannot just give away property. This sale is to a governmental organization that, that we are affiliated with, and we also can't just give property to them. Not all consideration has to be financial. There can be other consideration.
Such as economic development, prospects?
Sometimes, sometimes on economic development, if it is, particularly if it is between governmental agencies, that might be one thing. If it's to a private individual or a private industry, that, that would require a harder look. In this instance, the consideration that AMP Commission is going to give in addition to the nominal payment purchase price and covering all the closing costs, is an obligation to build the, the...
Pavilion.
The pavilion and install the bronze sculptures that are set out in the promotional materials on the AMP Commission's website within a certain amount of time.
Bring up the pictures in the back if you can, what Ms. Fields is talking. Bring it up if you can. There you go.
And, and also with the provision that if they don't construct it within the time permitted or install the art or ever fail to maintain it, that the property will revert to the city.
Go ahead. There you go. Thank you.
So how much is this property appraised for?
I don't know.
Well, I looked it up. The...
Good for you.
The county appra, did you say good for you?
Yeah, good for you.
The county appraisal is $975,000. Quarter, $25,000 short of a $1 million piece of property that the residents of, the taxpayers of North Little Rock own. In 2009, it sold for $287,000. We have a purchase price for $2,500. Can, does anybody want, I open the floor to answer a question of how we arrived at $2,500?
My question, he's, I guess he's addressing me. I gave it to AMP. I questioned it myself to some extent. But it's kinda like you're charging yourself for the property you already own. Meanwhile, as you said, while ago, economic development that this would bring to the city were far outweighed. The $975,000, a billion dollars, is supposed to bring in people from all over the United States to our city to look at these projects. I know that this no city will, they're not, we're not putting any money into it. We are selling the property as it was sitting there now. How long has that been sitting there, Mr. Hamilton?
The last time someone, according to the records, Argentico LLC sold it to us in 2013, so 12 years. For some time, John Chandler had an option that he paid $5,000, double this purchase price, just to have an option to buy it. But then, of course, COVID hit and...
Well, we didn't do, we didn't...
A lot of things went out.
We didn't take that away to 2022 or '23. Meanwhile, nothing was done on it. So this, so this, and I see something that's very valuable to the city. Again, is there anything else you'd like to say? If not, I'm gonna ask for a vote.
No, I certainly have more questions. I haven't seated the floor yet.
Ms. Ross, you haven't left the floor yet?
I have not.
All right, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, so I agree with the project. I think it's fantastic. It's wonderful. Kevin Cressy's an amazing artist, and I like this a lot. I just, I came to the mayor, on January 22nd, there was a man who asked me about buying some property next to some house he was doing. I couldn't care less who he was. I asked repeatedly what the process was for selling city-owned property. On April, on April 25th, I emailed you, Mayor, and asked you, I said, "I'm supporter of selling surplus property when it makes sense and if you think it's worth it." We're waiting for an appraisal of the property because you didn't wanna sell it without an appraisal, a third-party appraisal. I said, "I don't know the process. So for my education, how do you find out if it's worth the price? Is it someone we contract with or have on staff? How does this work?" And I didn't get any response. So around July, I asked for a meeting with you. And when I asked you how we sell property and if we could just get this guy an answer, I said, "I don't care who buys it, but how do we do this?" You said, "We cannot just sell to anyone. We have to have an appraisal. We have to stick a sign in the yard. We have to go through the process." I said, "That is fantastic." I said, "Let's do it, then." I sent out the email to the city attorney. I sent out the email to economic development. I sent out the meeting to planning, saying, "Is there any restrictions? Anybody? There, what's the process here? Because you do not rely to me, rely on me for this. What's the process and can we get it started?" I made sure you were involved. I CC'd you on all of it. The, the sign was put out. It was listed in the newspaper. We paid to have it listed in the newspaper. We kept it open for 60 days to accept bids, to accept any offers. One offer came in for the $5,000 for this unusable piece of property on the net. And we finally sold it as a city council last month, eight months after the guy was trying to buy it. My next question is why the rush? Why do we have to sell a $1 million appraised piece of property tonight? And putting a $1 million piece of property on the consent agenda especially is something I question. So I would like to know what the rush is. And I agree with the project. So why the rush right now? And then I have some more questions.
Ms. Ross?
I'm on the AMP Commission along with Councilmember Fowler. And I understand your question. This is that green strip of land there that we were gonna build the eateries and all this, and no one has come forward with that since John Chandler had done that. The reason the rush is, is that the public has stepped up and they are putting, this is not costing the city a dime. It's not coming out of our pocket. It's not coming out of our general ledger. We've got people standing, I mean, they're putting big money in it. It's not the city doing this. It's AMP. And, you know, we can, city can't do everything, but we sure can partner with somebody. And we're not even having to partner with them on it. That's why the, this is gonna be over a $2 million project that people, like you said, from all over the country, but all over the state, because each one of these bronze statues are going out to the individual, ones going out to the individual city that that artist grew up in, lived in. So this is a statewide tourism project also. And I can't think of any city that wouldn't take $2 million project coming in and sell it for $2,500. Good investment.
Mayor?
Mr. Fowler?
Mayor?
Yes.
The, the question in regards to the urgency, Councilmember Hamilton, has to do with pre-existing and scheduled commitments within the pavilion. I don't know if anyone is here from CVB this evening. It's my understanding that they want to work around, they want the project to be completed, Councilmember Ross, by the spring, so there's a minimal disruption for other scheduled events.
Anybody else? You got another question?
Yeah.
All right, you're up then.
She answered, but I, it only begs more questions. I'm sorry. That's the wrong way to say that. It bring, raises more questions. So AMP, Councilmember Fowler and Ross, have y'all, y'all met since the press conference, that, that surprise? Has, has the AMP Commission voted to make this offer?
We did it the time before, didn't we?
Y'all approved this offer?
I don't know if we have on the 25...
When I read the minutes, it was suspended.
I was, I was at the last meeting, so I don't know.
So the AMP Commission fully supports this?
Yes. They do. Now, whether they voted, I don't know. I wasn't there.
I'll be happy to pull up their minutes, Councilmember Hamilton, if they're available. Let you know. AMP is tax dollars, correct? They're not... They're not, I mean, it's not, I mean, are they paying for construction?
Yes, they're putting funds in.
They? Oh, that's you as well, correct?
Ms. Ross, could you speak in the microphone since we need minutes?
How much-
AMP is putting money into that.
How much money will the AMP, how much, how much tax dollars will the AMP Commission be spending on this?
I don't know the exact amount, 6,000 or 7,000? Can you remember, Scott? Is somewhere, is somewhere around the 6,000?
I think, it was, no, more than, I thought it was up to 600 of the 2 million.
600,000 taxpayer dollars will be going to the construction of this pavilion?
Correct.
And we, the urgency is because of a calendar of events?
Councilmember Hamilton, I believe you're directing these questions towards the wrong individuals.
Okay.
And-
I, I should direct it to the mayor and I apologize.
No, no.
I apologize.
I don't, I don't believe that, and that's not what I'm implying at all.
Okay.
AMP tax, for those that are not aware, is calculated by ho- a percentage of hotel lodging tax, a, an incremental, might I add, along with prepared foods. So, to say that all of that is derived from the citizens of North Little Rock, I don't know that there's that level of granularity to speak to a, uh, citizenship status of when you buy prepared food in the city of North Little Rock, where those tax, where those taxes are not a city tax or a, they are incremental taxes that are gathered.
It's, it comes from lodging and restaurant. It's where it comes from. It's not a city tax voted on by the city. It's something passed by the state legislature many years ago.
I believe that's misleading. I believe the city council approves the rate, that rate.
No, sir, not true.
We send it, we send a request.
We won't argue that now, but go ahead, Ms. Ross.
I believe a tax is a tax.
You wanna, you give up the floor?
I do not give up the floor. So, so why does AMP have to do this? If this is such an amazing thing, why can't we do it? We own the plaza. What is, what's the reason why we can't build the pavilion if it is that amazing an opportunity for us? I might vote for this if it is transparent and we appropriate $600,000 towards it. Why must we transfer all of this and not, not, this is the first time it's ever, this idea at all has ever been publicly discussed at this council?
Ms. Ross?
Uh, a couple of issues here. Let me see if I can remember all these. You know, talking about the sales tax and, and Councilmember Hamilton, I know that you were in the mayor's office when we were, the sales tax, when we were trying to get the 1% increase on the sales tax. And it was known, that was one thing at every meeting that everybody went to, is this is not the city paying fully. Was it 60% of the sales tax comes from outside of the city? And I, I believe that's correct. So, no, it's not every citizen in North Little Rock. They're not paying this full amount. The, uh, why the city is not doing this is because AMP is tourism. This is a tourist attraction and there's much more to come to it. The city does not have to maintain it. We have no additional cost to it. It's not gonna cost us anything. We don't have to have the upkeep on it. It's strictly a tourism, and that's why AMP is, you know, advertising and promotion tourism bureau.
Well, I'm, I'm glad we're having this discussion.
Wait, I still got the floor.
Yes, absolutely.
So, why it hasn't been brought to the city council before? I don't know if that's what the question was, but I know this has been broadcast everywhere. They had the, every ribbon cutting, everything. That information has been out here ever since that this started. I thought that we were gonna have one of the large donors here tonight, but I don't know if they, they made it tonight. And why AMP is not here is because they've got two other groups in town that they are meeting with tonight on some other big projects. So, they've got a lot of things going on right now.
Any more questions? If, I'm gonna ask for the question if you haven't got anymore. Have you got one more question?
I have plenty of more questions.
Then you better hurry up.
How much time do I have?
You got about three minutes, 'cause I'm about to ask-
I don't believe that, I don't believe that-
I can ask for the question.
You cannot. There is no procedure in the rules that this council has voted for to limit debate.
Your question is, sir. Keep on going.
I'll keep on going. Um, I, I don't understand, I'm, I'm just letting everyone know that there is no, I cannot see any reason why this was placed on the consent agenda for not even, to offer not even having a vote on it other than that. I would dispute that the city not paying anything, I would say, we're getting, there was no sign placed in the yard. We don't know what other people would, would offer for this. Has it been advertised in the newspaper? Has anybody out there? We have, the Chamber of Commerce markets available opportunities for people to purchase. Has the Chamber marketed this, this property? It's a nine, it's, it's a prey, now, property's only worth what somebody will pay for it, but all this being out there in the press and everything? Absolutely it has, but there's an FOI violation of any, if any of us talk about it, because it's coming before the council. So, if any of us have had discussions before tonight with each other, then there's been violations. This is the first time I've had to have a discussion with my fellow council members. I support the project. It's a massive piece of property that we are selling contrary debt. A $5,000 piece of property that you told me was exactly what had to be done to sell property. It took eight months to sell a $5,000 piece of property. This one is appraised at 975,000 and nobody even wanted to pull it out of the consent agenda but me. Now, we are, we're not, in terms of finances, selling property is supposed to fill the city coffers. It's supposed to be a good thing. According to some contracts we had recently on August 1st, the city didn't have funds available to pay for any, to pay for some contracts that this council approved. There were no funds available. We had to make a payment by August 1st on some small 17,500, 95,000, 30,000, 30,000, 37,500, 42,500, 35,000. We had contracts to pay those amounts. And the administration said funds were not available. If we don't have the money to pay that level of contract that this city signed and we end up breaching on those contracts, how are we letting a million-dollar piece of property go for $2,500 without at least some more discussion? I see the floor.
See the floor? You through?
I am.
I've asked, there's a motion on the floor, I think, and there was a second, if I'm not mistaken. Is that true?
Yes.
Call it.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
Thank you. R. 25155, please.
Councilmembers Insalaco and Fowler?
Call.
A resolution setting date for public hearing regarding the petition for the formation of the Indian Hills Lakefront property urban service district number one.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Excuse me? Question.
Let's call a motion. Do you want to call the motion or do you want to ask the question? Which would you say?
I would like to have discussion. It's called debate on the motion before the call.
Even though it's been called, then go back to it. All right, go ahead. Your question.
I had my hand raised. Did I do something wrong?
I think he recognized you.
Okay.
I think he recognized you.
I just did.
Okay. So, we've had people in here, we've had this chamber full about this issue. Why are we not, uh, how come we're not approving it tonight? Why are we, we hold public hearings all the time.
Okay, um, and, and I can answer this question very simply. This is the statutory way of bringing about an urban service district is you have a resolution to set the date and time for a public hearing, and then the public hearing will be at the next meeting together with an ordinance that, um, councilmembers Fowler and Insalaco have indicated that they would sponsor in order to establish the, to, to consider establishing the urban service district.
Okay.
And so, this is just a statutory procedure to set the public hearing for next time. It, it's a weird thing in the statute that, that you have to do this step.
Okay, so October 13th is the public hearing?
Right.
Here at the city council meeting?
Yes.
There are just tons of people interested in this, and I think we do a disservice without doing it. I appreciate the council members for the work that they did on getting this to a resolution, and I'm done.
Okay.
So, we were, I think he asked, he said he, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Hamilton said-
Motion to adopt.
The motion to adopt, and there, I think there was a second-
A second.
Before he wanted to ask the questions, correct?
Okay. Now, we can, if nobody else has anything, it's time to vote.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
Thank you.
R. 25156?
Please. Move for adoption.
Second.
Second.
Oh, she adopted. You can read it first.
Um-
Did, did she read it?
I didn't.
I know. That's why I said she gotta read it.
Okay, read it, please.
I was too quick.
Mayor Hartwick, um, a resolution amending the 2025 budget for the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, North Little Rock to include additional revenues and expenditures in certain budgets.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Second.
motion second.
On the motion, Ross? I'm sorry.
Wait a minute, he's got his hand up, I think.
Yes, I mean-
He wants to say something. Thank you.
Um, could you, could we have an explanation for why we're amending the budget?
Yes, please, Ms.-
It says including revenues and expenses, but it seems like the budget's falling short or the revenues are falling short?
Good evening. So, this budget amendment, I worked on the June financials and went through and went ahead and analyzed the departments out, uh, for the remainder of the year when I was working on those June financials, and I found, um, some areas, and I already talked to some departments about where they were gonna need some increases. So, that's what this budget amendment is doing. Um, I'm still evaluating revenues, but the revenues that I've adjusted, I already felt comfortable with increasing those. I do think by the end of the year, um, I might be able to analyze a couple of more, but property tax, I, I felt very confident in going ahead and adjusting that. You don't always, uh, have to do a balanced budget amendment, like when we issue the budget for the first time, we, we do that balanced. We can do budget amendments anytime we need something adjusted. So, um, a lot of this is insurance. When we did the budget last year, um, we had to put in a figure. Those prices came in a little higher, so, uh, as we get to mid-year, we wanted to go ahead and get those adjusted. Um, overtime for police, they've been out there working, they've been short-staffed. I think they have, uh, quite a few people on FMLA, uh, some people on military leave, so that makes their overtime go higher. You will see there's two lines for overtime, so reimbursed overtime, um, that one, we, we charged those agencies back out. Chief Tessing and Chief Davis and I have been discussing, uh, we're analyzing that rate that we charge for our officers, so we could have a ju- an adjustment, uh, with that revenue as well. A lot of our vehicles have had unexpected problems, and unfortunately, in the fire department, if we have to work on a motor, that, that cost us quite a bit. So, some of the insurance claims in fire specifically, uh, you see that revenue come in and you see us offset their, um, maintenance. If you skip two parks, their revenue is coming in higher than anticipated, so to offset some of this expense, we're taking that transfer back because their revenues are gonna meet the rest of their obligations, so we don't, the general fund doesn't need to give them that money. Um, they had some other supplies that are expense lines that they needed adjusted. Credit card expense was the biggest one, so that's when you go use one of our facilities and, uh, you use a credit card, there's a fee that's passed on to the user, but then, um, the city has had to absorb some. We're looking at that contract to get that, uh, rate negotiated. On IT, the 300,000 in maintenance of software, that was actually for the tasers in the police department because they have software on them that has to be updated and things through IT, so that was an oversight in the budget process. And when we rolled those POs forward, you all approved that contract, but we just didn't get that line, so those funds are there. We just had to make it official on paper. And the last one is the 2023 sales tax capital improvement fund. So, with the money we've given to parks, the Parks Commission has met and they've, um, come up with some certain projects, so you'll see that one just zeros out because it's just moving an expense budget from one place to a more descriptive place, so it's easier for them to keep up with.
Questions, Mr. Hamilton?
Yes, Ms., Ms. Strange, does, uh, does the Parks Department get any money from AMP?
Uh, the Parks Department gets the food and lodging tax.
So, so that tax, that tourism tax goes to Parks, our Parks Department?
Part of it goes to Parks and AMP keeps part of it.
Okay. Um, overall, would you say the city's in any, I, I mean, it's a budget amendment, is it saying that, I saw 600,000 at the bottom. What, I'm, I'm, I don't understand, I'm not an accountant, I don't understand that. Is this to amend the budget that it's not equal, so, I'm sorry, what?
So, if you look at your summary page, it'll be broken down by funds. So, we passed a balanced budget amendment, um, back in December, I believe it was. In April, we came, I came to you all with all the POs that we rolled forward. If you remember correctly, that's where we're just going and upping expenses for POs that we already had that we didn't expend. For instance, fire is a very good one. Um, ladder trucks, pumpers take anywhere from 24 months to almost 48 months now. So, you pass that in one budget, then in February, uh, March, April, we go through and look at all those outstanding purchase orders and bring those back to you. Um, if you remember, years ago, before Mayor Hartwick came in, we passed a, um, reserve policy. If we ever, if anything we do becomes in violation of us going under that reserve, then I have to notify you all. This does not do that.
Okay, so how much are we adding to the budget?
Well, the general fund, we're adding the 2.265 in expense, so another 2.2 million. We're adding 304,000 in revenue right now. So, the expense is going up, the 2.2 million, revenue's going up 304.
Do we, it, but you're comfortable with the fact that we have the money to, uh, cover that added ex, 2 point, what was it, million?
2,265,000, yes. We have the cash in the bank. No one will miss payroll. I would not come up here and speak if I wasn't comfortable with it. It does not get us into violation of our reserve policy.
That, I, I appreciate that, and thank you for the concise summary. My last question is, on August 1st, the determination was made that we do not have funds available to, um, approve or to pay seven out of the eight contracts that the city entered into and that the council approved. The determination was made, funds are not available.
Respectfully, I disagree with that statement, and you and I have had a lengthy conversation about this. We never determined they were not available. We said sales tax revenue, which is our largest revenue source in the general fund, 65% of our revenue comes from sales tax, so that covers 65% of everything we do. We said we were still evaluating those revenues and wanted to get, wait until the next ones
I, I can respect that. The contract says the city shall pay the first payment of 42,500 or whichever amount was, they're all the same, except for the amounts, upon approval of official public action of the North Little Rock City Council. Contingent upon the availability of funds, the second payment shall be paid on or before August 1st, 2025. So the city approved this contract.
There's more to that clause that you didn't read out.
If funds are unavailable, blank shall be given written notice of termination of this agreement. And I've checked with all seven of the split payments who did not get their funds on August 1st. Somebody got funds. There was one, the funds were available for one of those, but for seven out of the eight funds, apparently, according to this contract, a determination was made that funds were not available, and it wasn't terminated. And so therefore, I am not, I cannot see any other way than the city breached seven contracts that was signed.
I thought we were talking about the budget amendment specifically.
Yes, I wanted to know if we had funds available.
We made those payments last week.
I understand, after I, you and I had these conversations, apparently funds became available?
As I told you in our phone conversation, the money has always been in the bank. As your CFO, it is my job to all of you, when our largest tax revenue source is falling hundreds of thousands of dollars behind, to advise you that when we have things like that, that we need to really evaluate it. Because the, the offset is we could have to lay employees off.
Absolutely.
If we get to November, yeah, I'm stopping.
Oh, and, and, no, I didn't want to interrupt you, I was just wanting to go next.
If we get to Nov, if we had made all of those payments at the beginning of the year, I, I highly thank Ms. Robinson for making that suggestion, because if, if we made all those payments on January 1, and we got to November and were below budget, and let's just say hypothetically, we didn't have money in the bank, because that's how we have to look at it.
I agree.
I don't want to tell any employees we can't make their payroll.
All right, Ms. Fields?
Okay.
Or do you yield the floor?
And, and, I'm, I, on a procedural matter?
Thank you.
Um, the city council has adopted the procedural rules for municipal officials for their parliamentary procedures. It's simplified, it's not as complex as Robert's Rules of Orders, but one of the provisions in that, when a, when a member is, is discussing a motion and, and there is debate, that their remarks be confined to the subject. And, and I, I feel like, like we've gotten a little bit off-subject here because the subject is the actual budget amendment. The mayor's the chair of the meeting, and, and, but I did just want to point that out from the rules.
I appreciate that, Mr. Hamilton?
Um, then a discussion on that, this is a budget amendment to add 2.3 million dollars in expenses to the budget. And I am concerned about voting for this budget amendment, about adding 2.3 million dollars in expenses, because we were not able to honor contracts at the time for about 200,000 dollars.
Well, I don't think that.
It's okay, it's all right. You've explained what the thing is, so is there any more questions on the budget?
No further questions.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Now, where are we right now? Ms. Cole, Ms. Hart?
I, I did want to verify, she did say that we have given the final payment to those people, okay.
Anybody else?
I wasn't clear on that.
All right, Ms. Rolfs? I think there was a, help me, find my mistake, it's been too long. Have we had a call, have we had a voice to ask?
Yes, yes, we're ready to vote on the motion to adopt. Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
Thank you.
R 25157, Mayor Hartwick?
Please, and I'll have to convene a private, and I'll convene a public hearing.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 313 West 47th Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to constitute, constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owners to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption. There's a motion, let me go ahead and pause the public hearing, though, at this time, those wishing to speak for or against, R 25157, please come to the microphones, wish to speak for or against, please come forward. Seen none, adjourn, and now. Alfred, multiple seconds.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
What was her second?
Yes.
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 Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
R 25158, Mayor Hartwick?
Please, again.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 1420 Franklin Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Thank you, again, I need to convene a public hearing. I will do so, those who want to speak for or against, please come to the microphone, for or against. Seen none, adjourn it, please.
Move for adoption.
Second.
And a second, thank you.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
R 25159, Mayor Hartwick?
Please, again.
A resolution declaring certain buildings and houses and other structures located at 904 Atkinson Road Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time to, for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Again, I need to convene a public hearing, those wishing to speak for or against this, please come forward, that'd be R 25159. Seen none, adjourn it, please.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion second.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Hang on a second, Ms. Robinson? She's got her hand up.
This 904 Atkinson Road, uh, we have sent out the notification to this family. Yes. Did we get a response back?
Come on up to the microphone, Mr. Ward or Ms. Felicia, if you don't mind, please. Do you have a question, did you get it?
We did get a response back, I do have a certified mail shown when we received signature.
Okay. They didn't give any comments or anything. They did not, okay.
All right, anything else, anybody? Ms. Hart, anybody? All right, it's been a question of a second.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
R 25160, Mayor Hartwick?
Please, again.
A resolution certifying the amount of cleanup liens to be filed with the Pulaski County tax collectors against certain real properties located, property located at 515 Gordon Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Again, I need to convene a public hearing, those wishing to speak for or against, please come to the microphone, R 25160, please. Seen none, adjourn.
Motion?
Motion?
There's a motion?
To adopt.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
R 25161, Mayor Hartwick?
Please.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Pulaski County tax collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisance.
Again, I need to call public hearing on this, those wishing to speak for or against, R 25161, please come forward. Seen none, adjourn this public hearing?
Move for adoption.
Motion to adopt?
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
It's O 2576 is where you should be.
Seventy-six, okay. Councilmember Ross?
Uh, please call it.
An ordinance rezoning certain real property located at 1516 West 46th Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from R 3 to R 4 zoning classification by amending ordinance number 9263, declaring an emergency first reading.
Move suspend the readings.
Second.
Motion second.
On the motion to suspend the readings, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
Move for adoption, but I do have one comment to make. Say again? I do have a, to point out something in here that I need to point out? Please. In the legislation, uh, it's just a scribbler's error, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands, that property address is 1519, which is correct, on the map it says 1516, uh, let's see, sec, or what is it, let's see, in the title, on section 1, and the address part, the, the property of there, yes.
And we, we have fixed that, it was a typo on our part.
Just want to make sure that everybody understood that, that we are.
It is 1519.
1519, correct. Okay. For me, Ms. Hamilton?
Uh, is the applicant here?
Yes, they are.
Hi. If I could just ask one question? What, uh, what's your need for this rezoning?
So this was originally a triplex, it has been a triplex since it was built, it has original rock foundation, three separate entrances, three separate parking pads. In 2020, it lost during COVID, it lost electricity for over 12 months, and it automatically converted to be duplex, and so we just need to revert it back to its original grandfathered zoning so that it can be a three-family dwelling.
Recognize historical use.
Recognize, yeah, we can't pull permits to fix it until we have our middle child back, which is Unit B.
I understand, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt?
Yeah, you need to, go ahead.
Elizabeth Jimenez, and do you need my address as well?
I didn't hear.
Planning needed my address, do you need my address?
Just name an address, please.
Elizabeth Jimenez, 2902 Seminole Trail, Sherwood, Arkansas, 72120.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Anything else, yes, all right, got you. Where are we?
I need a second motion.
Second.
Motion second.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Insalaco?
Yes.
Other comment, I have a Mr. Kenny Wilder, are you still here, Mr. Wilder? I thought I saw you over there, hey Kenny? Please come to the microphone, identify yourself, please, you got three minutes.
I'm Kenny Wilder, retired from North Little Rock Police Department in 1994. I'm back again after having been here June 23rd to ask for some help on the old police pension fund. Want to emphasize again, this fund is not the same as lofty that the current retirees are eligible for. This plan that I am in has received 150 dollar amount of money above what we were eligible to draw in the last 20 years. As far as I've been able to tell, there's approximately 50 officers, and I don't know how many would have been receiving funds from this plan. The questions I have now, since I reached out to a councilman back in April about this, and he said he had gathered some information from finance, I have heard nothing else about what was found out. Questions I have, where does the money to this pension plan come from? Does the city ever run out of money for this fund? And if it does happen, why does it happen? Can this old pension plan not be rolled over into lofty that the current eligible police officers get? And the current pension plan not be changed, at least to where we receive a COLA, a cost of living increase every year? But once again, this is, this is not the same plan as the current lofty gasket. It's, I'm 79 years old, and I intend on being back here on a regular basis as long as I possibly can to see if we can get something done about this plan.
So what will happen here, Mr. Wilder, if you don't mind? I've got your questions that you've asked the council tonight.
Yes, sir.
I can't answer them tonight, if you're saying you're coming back, I'll have CFO look at it and get back to you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hamilton, so I'm sure has a question.
Yes, sir.
I must maintain my reputation. Mr. Wilder, that was me that you reached out to?
Okay.
Um, on March 21st, and I replied back that I would get with finance.
Correct.
And according to my emails, I did send you some stuff. We talked again April 14th, April 24th, and then on, um, June 16th, you told me that you were planning on, um, going to the city council the next night, or the next week on June 23rd?
That's correct.
And I replied with a lengthy response, far too much for me to go into it now, but it was what finance had told me. This is a closed pension plan, and, um, the, at the time, according to my understanding, just wanting to get you answers as, as much as possible, and it's what I told you here, um, that the, and I wonder, I missed June 23rd, did you make it to that meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, did you ask your questions then?
I did.
I missed it, that, that one, so I'm, I'm, I'm glad you were, you were able to do so. So if you have, did you get any answers from those? Well, what I got from finance was this is a closed retirement plan. It is not, as you've stated a number of times, the LOFTI, which are current.
Yeah, I don't have a clue what that means.
Closed means at the time, they were given a choice to either stay on the city pension or go over to the LOFTI, as best I can tell. Honestly, there's a lot, some others who are here who could better explain that. And at the time, certain members chose to stay on the, the pension plan, the, the one that y'all were on, and chose not to go to LOFTI. And, um, so that was the contract that the city signed with y'all. I believe that you said over 20 years ago, I think about 10 years if I recall, the city council did do an additional payment, but I, I can't guarantee that, I don't, I don't[1673.68] I don't, I don't know, but, um...
It was a one-time $50 that we all got. And if I remember correctly, from what I've gathered from other officers, there was no promise of anything further to come from the city. Or was there anything like that implied?
Yeah, there, there is none. I don't want to lie to you. There is no, right now, there's no contractual obligation that we increase the retirement, the amount, um, because that was the contract that, that y'all had signed. Now, the city council can pretty much do whatever it wants. So I would individually contact city council members, requesting them for an increase. Um, I, I, it is up to them individually whether or not to support or sponsor an increase for, for what y'all are doing. So that's the best I can answer your question as of right now. Um, and just for the record, I, I have mentioned that once before, but you should individually, contact individual city council members to support perhaps a one-time or put it in the budget for any other increase that you like. And then the council will determine if funds are available for that.
Anybody else have comments?
We're here.
Mr. Wilder, I, we've got it if you don't mind, sir, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you for that.
Anybody else, Ms. Hart?
Yes, I just wanted, um, a point of recognition. Um, my lovely husband is in, is here today. He's a, a 34-year veteran of U.P.S. and he's on vacation this week, so raise your hand, babe, so they can see how gorgeous you are. You can look, but don't touch.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Baxter? No, I'll, I'll yield to Ms. Fowler.
I just wanted to take this opportunity on behalf of councilmember Insalaco and myself to publicly state, anyone that has any interest in speaking in regards to the proposed lakefront Indian Hills USD, please be present, uh, at our next council meeting, October 13th.
Baxter?
Uh, Mayor, I'd be remiss if, uh, we didn't, uh, publicize the fact that we're gonna, the senior citizen center is going to recognize, uh, former director, uh, Charlie Baxter and, uh, in renaming the art gallery in the facility, the, uh, Charlie Baxter Art Gallery. That'll happen on October 10th at 11:00 a.m. And, uh, like to have everybody down there to recognize him. He's served in many capacities in this city, Mayor. So I think it's, uh, befitting.
He was actually worked for me the first time.
Well, and it's unfortunate, Mayor, that you choose him over, over me to, as your golfing partner, but anyway.
I do.
Uh, just want to put that out there, that, that city is recognizing him with, with that, uh...
Anybody else?
The thing.
Mr. Hamilton?
Uh, due to the FOI stuff, I want to take these things kind of slow. I'm trying to put together a, just a resolution. Um, there's a, a Justice Department rule going into effect about how accessible our website has to be. Our deadline's April 26th, so no emergencies. Um, I've got something to hand out. I've given one to, uh, Clerk Whitby, Clerk and Treasurer Whitby, and to put in for his communication next meeting. I, you can read it on your own time. Um, won't bore anybody with the details now, but, um, I just think it will take some money. So I wanted to do it before budget season starts rolling around, so we're thinking about it at least. Um, the second thing I wanted to announce was the federal government budget is not looking pretty. Um, we have a, uh, a request from Senator Bozeman for $2 million for the Main Street viaduct. I don't see, it was, it didn't happen last year so far. Doesn't look like it's going to happen this year. So I'd like to just put in our heads that I'd like to think about putting some of that money that would count towards any matches, um, in the budget for next year. I just want to mention it.[1599.21]